For October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman. Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras is absent. Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you very much. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three, and we have a three A, espresso presentation from the Southern Valley Alliance. Yep. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, speaking to the microphone, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Katie Shawman. Should I say my address if I don't live in Shakopee?
Yep.
So my address is one-one-eight-five Farmers Lane in Bell Plain, five-six-zero-one-one. I am here on behalf of Southern Valley Alliance. We are the nonprofit organization that provides domestic violence services for Scott and Carver Counties. And October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so I'm here just to give you a little bit of an update on what we've done over the last year, what's happening within our organization, and also just do a little woo-woo because we're moving to Shakopee. I'm honored to be with you all tonight, so thank you so much for letting me come and just speak for a few minutes. Domestic Violence Awareness Month is such an important time to honor, remember, and recognize survivors and victims of domestic violence. This year, we are celebrating our fortieth anniversary, serving the communities of Carver and Scott Counties, and since our organization was founded, we have assisted over twenty-three-thousand individuals as they tried to lead healthy, violence-free lives. One in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of domestic abuse in their relationships. In Minnesota alone, more than sixty-five thousand adults receive services from agencies like ours every year. And one in three people under the age of eighteen have been physically harmed by somebody that they're in a dating relationship with. These statistics are the statistics that we are working daily to try and prevent from happening within our community. We'd like to think that it doesn't happen, but the truth is that domestic violence can happen anywhere, anytime, to anyone. Last year, we served nine-hundred-and-forty-five survivors within Carver and Scott Counties, and we answered over eighteen-hundred crisis line calls. We launched two brand-new programs to help us better address this in our community. We launched the lethality assessment program with all law enforcement in Carver and Scott Counties, and we launched a new pilot program with Saint Francis Hospital to better serve those survivors that go to the hospital for injuries due to a domestic incident. Over twenty-seven-hundred individuals in the last year attended some sort of training or awareness event or presentation, so we can all continue to better communicate and break that stigma and break the silence around abuse. We are so excited to be moving our office from Bell Plain to Shakopee. We are so grateful for the opportunity to just continue to strengthen our partnership here in the community and continue to serve those experiencing abuse better. Bell Plain has been a wonderful home over the last forty years, but it's really difficult to get to Bell Plain if you live in Norwood Young, America, or if you live in Prior Lake. So being central between the two communities is going to really be a huge step forward for survivors. So thank you for your continued partnership. We would not be able to do what we do, we would not be able to serve those survivors without your support. So thank you, thank you for this moment to bring light to such an important topic. We greatly appreciate all that you do.
Well, thank you for being here, and certainly the awareness is very important throughout all our communities, and thank you for serving our region. Welcome to Shakopee. Oh, is that your groundbreaking, as several of us were a month ago, so great to have you. Comments? Councilwoman Brennan?
I don't have much to say, but welcome to the community. You're a great organization to have nearby, especially since it's located near Scott County, and so, welcome.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lehman?
Mayor, just comment one question. Thanks for what you do.
Yeah.
Good service. Question I have is, the literature that you provided us mentions Carver and Scott Counties. Are there chapters in other counties, Dakota, Hanover?
Yes, so there are domestic violence agencies throughout the entire state. We're a part of the Minnesota Coalition, which is called Violence Free Minnesota. So as that entire coalition, we work together, we share information with one another, and we also partner with Minnesota Day One, which is a network, an additional network of all of our agencies, so we can partner and provide transportation to shelter, since there's no shelter in Scott or Carver Counties, so we all work together, so.
So there's inner?
Yes, yep.
Somebody's in a different county besides the two that you serve, you can hook them up with the correct contacts.
Definitely, yeah. And we won't turn anyone away as well. If they're not in our community and they need services, there are things that we can do, make those warm connections. We're not going to say, just because you're not in our service area, we're not going to help. We're always there to help.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Whiting?
Thank you for being here tonight, and it's unfortunate that your organization has to exist, but fortunately, because of all these calls and situations, I'm glad you're in the neighborhood. And in fact, welcome to Third Avenue, so I wasn't at your groundbreaking, but right down the road, so thanks for being here. So with that, I would make a motion to adopt the proclamation of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Matter of fact, before we vote, we could read the proclamation into the public record.
I'd be happy, happy to read that. This is an official proclamation from the city of Shakopee declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So whereas in the city of Shakopee, in recognition of critical work being done by domestic violence advocates in service of the survivors and victims they serve, all residents are encouraged to actively engage in the work and events sponsored by the Southern Valley Alliance and other organizations working toward the elimination of domestic violence. And whereas more than ten million adults experience domestic violence and over one-point-five-million high school students are physically abused by dating partners annually in the United States, and whereas more than nineteen-thousand calls are placed to domestic violence hotline nationwide every day, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but communities and our nation as a whole, and whereas Shakopee joins with others across the state of Minnesota and nationwide in supporting domestic violence victims and survivors, the advocates and organizations who serve them in holding offenders accountable. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the city council of the city of Shakopee hereby do proclaim October twenty-twenty-two as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Adopted in this regular session of the city council of the city of Shakopee, Minnesota, held the eighteenth day of October twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you very much, councilor. I do have a motion on the table and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you all. We really appreciate it.
Let's move ahead to item number four, the agenda before us. Any updates on that, Mr. Reynolds?
The only updates or changes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, are both in eight A and eight B for our hearings that we have coming up. You have updated lists that I provided to you earlier today by email, and then you have copies here as well, and they will be made part of the record.
That noted. Councilwoman Brennan?
I make a motion to approve the agenda of October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I have a motion and a, Councilwoman Lehman?
Second, Mayor.
I have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Lehman for their discussion. Discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. Let's move ahead to consent business. Any changes, updates, Mr. Reynolds?
Not from staff, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Whiting?
Please pull five C one.
Five B one?
C one.
C one, okay. Others? Councilwoman Brennan?
Five A five.
Huh?
Five A five.
Five A five. Okay. Councilwoman Lehman?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
I have a motion and a, and a second for the modified consent agenda, which would not include five A five and five C one. And before we would vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for eighteen October of two thousand twenty-two. Five A one approves the city council minutes from October fourth of two thousand twenty-two. Five A two approves resolution R. two thousand twenty-two TAC one-two-six, which approves a joint powers agreement between the state of Minnesota and the city of Shakopee to use systems and tools available over the state's criminal justice data networks. Five A three approves a temporary liquor license for the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce Holiday Fest event on December third of two thousand twenty-two. Five A four approves a tobacco license for Shakopee Butcher LLC doing business as Shakopee House, located at fifteen-eighty-three First Avenue East. Five A six approves a change in dental benefit providers from Delta Dental to MetLife Dental for city employees. Five B one approves a request from Shakopee Youth Hockey Association for scheduling rotating outdoor hockey rink usage on a trial basis. Five B two accepts a donation for baseball bollards from Shakopee Bowl to be located at Schlepper Stadium. Five B three approves the naming of two fields at the Seventeenth Avenue Sports Complex as Mark Gromish Fields. Five C two declares two forfeited vehicles and a speed display trailer as surplus and property and authorizes their proper disposal. Five D one adopts resolution number R. two thousand twenty-two TAC one-three-three, which declares costs to be assessed, orders preparation of proposed assessments, and sets a public hearing for the two thousand twenty-two full-depth payment reconstruction and rehabilitation project. Five D two authorizes a professional services agreement in the amount of one-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars with SRF Consulting Group to prepare construction plans and provide construction administration for Windermere Bluff Community Park. And five D three authorizes a professional service agreement in the amount of eighty-nine-thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars with WSB and Associates to perform a feasibility study for the two thousand twenty-four Stagecoach Road Full Depth Payment Reconstruction and Trail Project.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion and a second to approve the modified consent agenda. The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. Therefore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. Modified consent agenda has been approved. Let's move ahead to item number six. Now, I would like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record on an item not on the agenda tonight. Good evening and welcome. And please speak directly into the microphone for the record.
Good evening. My name is Howard Larson. I live at eight-seven-eight-five Boiling Springs Lane in Shakopee. I'm coming here tonight to get educated on some city government functions, so. When I built my house in nineteen-seventy-six, there was agricultural land on the north side of the residential neighborhood. There was a two-acre wetland that made up part of the agricultural land. During my time there, I have experienced a heavy rainfall that created over a two-acre pond in the back of my property. Being that it was a wetland, the water got absorbed in a couple of days. Around twenty-five years ago, the property on the north side of the residential neighborhood and south of Hanson Ave came in to be rezoned from agriculture to light industrial. I attended the rezoning meeting, as did a lot of my neighbors. We wanted to express our concerns about the visual and audible encumbrances, as well the disturbance of the natural water flow. These issues were addressed at the meeting by putting conditions on the development. There were going to be limits on the hours of operation. There was going to be a berm with trees on top. The water was to be detained on the property. As far as I can see, no attempt had been made to follow these conditions for rezoning. The first thing that was done was to remove the peat from the existing wetland. When the property was backfilled with dirt and the elevation was raised to the point that the current engineering drawing shows that the wetline outlet is towards my property. It looks like to me that the runoff water got diverted to the east of the property. Realcal development has still leaves my property at risk. My questions are, why weren't the original rezoning requirements enforced? What department is in the city is responsible to oversee rezoning requirements? The other thing is, how can a hole be allowed to be dug into groundwater, to the groundwater, and be used to dispose of parking lot runoff? The residential neighborhoods that depend on that groundwater are required to seal our abandoned wells as not to pollute the groundwater. Is there an environmental department in the city that should have oversight? The developer, Paragon Land Sculpting, located on the east side of this attached property, had to put up a berm, limit the hours of operations for his residential neighbors to the east. And why aren't the neighbors on the south side getting the same consideration? It has been nearly twenty-five years for the developer to comply with the rezoning requirements, and I wonder why are the requirements now being ignored? Why now is it such a rush to do something that will affect our neighborhood forever? I'm not against development, I just don't think that we should be negatively affected. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments and your concerns, Councilwoman Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't catch the address, sir.
Eighty-seven-eight-five Boiling Springs Lane. And I do have a lot of pictures of the before, of what it used to be, the elevation and all that, and how my property sits right in the edge of this bowl that used to dispose of the water. And, you know, they're trying to address some of my concerns, but I just don't see that it's doing what originally was proposed in the rezoning meeting. And I realize it's been a long time ago, and I think there's probably only three of us still around that are following the whole process, right?
Yeah. Councilwoman Whiting?
Have you brought this to the attention of city staffers? Is this the first time you've brought it up?
Yes, yes, I have.
Okay.
I think Michael will verify that.
Okay. Well, we'll work on the issue then.
This is the first I've heard of it. I have to.
And Mayor, I know we don't take action on issues. The questions that I would just, curious with staff research going back twenty-five years, I guess, if possible. The conditional use permit conditions was brought up on certain properties in this area that were rezoned, and then I want, I wanted the location, so I got that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess the other thing, I'd like to see a little transparency, so that I could be more aware of what's going on, instead of all of a sudden, you know, I'm getting bad news.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This is a period in our meeting when any resident can come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Mr. Reynolds, have we received any electronic communication?
No, sir.
All right. Seeing none, then, we could move ahead to business removed from consent, and we'll start with five A five. Councilwoman Brennan?
Thank you. I had questions for Mr. Cohen, if he is still in here.
Mr. Cohen, would you like to come ahead, come and come to the table? Councilor has a question. This is in regard to your tobacco license.
Of course.
Yeah, you're applying for a tobacco license and asking the commission or the council to approve it, but I have some questions for you. When we spoke a few weeks ago, you commented that you hadn't read the ordinances that that Shakopee has. And I'm wondering if you, if we approve this tonight, have you had a chance to read the ordinance, and do you understand what the responsibilities that you have if we issue a license?
I have not had the opportunity to review the ordinances, but I would be more than happy to review them immediately, if given the opportunity.
Do you have more?
I, that is concerning, because it is effective for me, I guess. I don't know where the other council members stand on it, but I guess I don't have any other questions for you.
Okay. Others? Comments on this? You know, my only concern is operating previously without a tobacco license and now applying and going through the proper channel. Obviously, there's some requirements with that, and you need to be aware of those.
Yes, sir, but, you know, we maintain eight other tobacco licenses, and I'm sorry, councilperson, I did not realize that it was your expectation for me to review the ordinances as it pertains to maintaining. I didn't walk away from our conversation with that understanding. It's my understanding that we're going to discuss a variety of things here today, so.
Well, the item before us is just in regard to the tobacco. I know you're also on the agenda later this evening.
Yes, sir.
For liquor.
Yes, sir.
But this topic here, five A five, is just in regard to your license, and as a business owner, when you take out a license, you should be familiar with all the, the rules and regulations of, of being awarded such license, I guess.
You know, again, as somebody who maintains multiple tobacco licenses across the state, I'm familiar with a lot of the ordinances, but when asked if, whether or not I had read Shakopee's, no, I have not read Shakopee's.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Sir, so you, you have eight other stores?
Yes, sir.
That sell tobacco?
Yes, sir.
And?
Not in the city of Shakopee.
No, I understand that. So you're very familiar with the requirements for getting a license?
Yes, sir.
What happened here?
Truthfully, we do a lot of our stuff via attorneys, and our attorneys do all of the licensing and the license applications on our behalf. This is one of those situations where our attorneys simply did not do it on our behalf. We thought that that person had done it on our behalf. And, I mean, I remember the email from the city in regards to, sorry, renewing our license. And as I go back and I read the language in the, in the email, it says, license holders will be given, will be sent out information in regards to a renewal, and I just assumed that our staff had completed that renewal. When we were passing compliant, or when we were having compliance checks as it pertains to both liquor and tobacco, I mean, truthfully, I had no reason to think that we did not have an active tobacco license. We were getting compliance checks in regards to tobacco. So again, I truly, when somebody told me, and it's Heidi Emerson who told me that we didn't have an active tobacco license, both of us were sort of stunned, because, given the correspondence that the two of us had had back and forth, it was, it's certainly an oversight, and it's certainly an oversight that we made. You know, in the end, the responsibility falls on us, not our attorney. But again, it, it's just one of those things where it was a really unfortunate situation, and we addressed it as quickly as possible. When we found out we didn't have an active tobacco license, I mean, we immediately pulled tobacco, I mean, immediately pulled all tobacco off of our shelves. We have not completed one tobacco transaction since being advised that we didn't have a license.
And you've been in the city of Shakopee for how long now?
Just over a year.
And during that timeframe, we find out that you were operating without a license, we find out that you failed a tobacco compliance check, and you failed a liquor compliance check?
Yes, sir.
That frankly is stunning to me.
Councilwoman Whiting, what's?
Yeah, I have a question for staff, I guess, rather than Mr. Cohen here at this point in time. So is the license for the building or for the owner? Because this was a sale of a, of a business.
So the licenses are for the owners of the property?
So it's for the owner, not the, not the site. Certain times, there's a license for a site. All right. Is there any typical clawback or any, anything in our rules and regulations that say we wouldn't allow a tobacco license for any reason?
I'm not aware of any. Mr. Thompson, are you aware of any?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, not off the top of my head. I just checked the code for liquor, and I haven't checked the code yet for, for tobacco. I don't know if, if blurry is or not, but it's a license application. I can tell you the city council has discretion on whether or not to grant it or deny it. It has to be, the reason, if it was to be denied, it has to be reasonably related to the, what are you seeking to do here? And I mean, I mean, you couldn't deny a license because someone had a speeding violation. Okay, it has to be tied to the type of application that's being requested.
Excuse me, can I make one comment? Sorry.
No, is there any more questions of the applicant?
I do have one more question.
Yeah.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm curious to know how you obtain tobacco product to sell if you don't have a license to purchase.
Through our distributor. All tobacco products are sold through us, through our distributor.
So do you have to have a license to purchase it?
I'm not responsible for, again, I'm sorry that this is not, I'm not the one who buys tobacco on our stores. I mean, clearly, it is not a requirement, because at no point would we send them false information. I mean, we were buying our tobacco from the distributor for that store, and that's how we obtain our tobacco.
I'm not familiar with that. I, I think you were buying at a wholesale level and then need a tobacco license to sell to the retail aspect of it.
And one clarification I do want to make to the city administrator, the, the tobacco and liquor compliance thing that we failed was one particular event. It was on the same transaction.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
Councilwoman Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Does the tobacco license, we know that alcohol licenses are basically issued by the state, and we just reaffirm, correct?
Can you, Councilmember Lehman, can you repeat that question?
So liquor licenses are through the state, and we either confirm or deny for some reason, or, no?
No, we approve them, and the state approves liquor licenses.
Were the issuer?
Yes.
Is tobacco treated the same at the state level as alcohol?
No, we are the ones that approve a tobacco license.
Okay.
And Mayor and council, I have our code up concerning tobacco license, and I can read you this section, if you would like.
Can we give that code number to you?
Yes. City code one-one-zero-point-zero-five-seven, and license, under section B, it says action on a license. It says, "City council may either approve or deny the license, or it may defray action for such reasonable period of time as may be necessary to complete any investigation of the application or the applicant." If the city council approves the license, the city clerk... If the city council approves the license, the city clerk shall issue the license to the applicant. If the city council denies the license, notice of the denial shall be given to the applicant along with notice of the applicant's right to obtain judicial review of the city council's decision.
Councilor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, we have not heard, we have an item on the agenda tonight under eight C. The hearing for the, in regards to the liquor and I assume the tobacco violation, or is this just, it just says liquor? But I think in this case, you know, we've heard the argument back and forth, either personally or tonight. I think, in my opinion, we should move ahead with this tobacco license and then face the issue of the license and the liquor violation on eight C. So I would move to approve the tobacco license for Merwin Liquors located at 471 Marshall Road with the payment and background fees and retroactive application fees. And then I'll add a comment after that.
So this is just for the tobacco, which is proper on this agenda item. Councilor Lehman?
I just have a second to motion, Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Councilor Lehman?
Speaking to the motion, I agree with Councilor Whiting. I don't think the compliance issues should be connected to what's before us. I think what's before us, I think you're correct, is a separate issue and it's based solely on the lack of the license for a period of time, not the compliance.
Councilor Whiting?
My comment is, you know, typically tobacco is sold at liquor stores. I don't smoke and I don't drink anymore, but so it's not like I'm having an issue with that. But I think we've got to keep it separate. I think if there is a tobacco violation, then we go to by our rules. And I know this was an issue where they hadn't, didn't have a license, but I understand that. I believe that it was just an issue where a little confusion there, so.
I have a motion and a second on the table for approval. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead to the other item that was removed from consent and that is five C one, which is a workstation purchase from local project funds and Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first point out that I have no issue with the agenda item. The workstations for the police department are necessary for some future growth. I have a problem with where it's being paid from under the local projects funds. If you recall, we had a meeting and discussed where these, it was under another name at the time, the fund balance, our fund. We had a discussion of where we wanted those funds to go. Some were spent on different projects. And I know staff said they'd bring back items as they saw fit, but I would have to vote against it because I want to see us go back and talk about where those funds should go before we spend them.
Well, reviewing the record in regard to this agenda item, we have, in the last year, probably at least six months past, twice talked about the local fund projects. One of them was some security glass situation, also some community emergency warning sirens. And this item was on the list. It had a higher dollar figure. And now that has been worked through and been reduced. So I do believe we have discussed this, but Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. The, I don't recall the original amount, but it is reduced. One thing I like to look for in these funds that we're talking about, the federal recovery, economic recovery dollars, is projects that don't have an ongoing expense to the taxpayers. So let's say you build a something that you've got to now maintain over thirty, forty-five year life cycle and stuff like that. This is an item that doesn't have that. So that's a good thing. It's a small item. But I think the results of such a small item are substantial. So we did build the police department for future growth. This is a growth-related expansion of cubicles and workspace and productivity, quite honestly. So I personally don't have a problem with this. I'm glad that the price is down, though.
I have no comment.
Okay. So, well, here we are. It's before us. It was on consent and it was pulled. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase using the local project funds to work stations for the police department's enhanced productivity.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, I think we, I don't recall it being on our first discussion. It may have been. We need to get back to looking at how these funds are going to be expended. So I think we need to have another meeting on it.
Motion and second on the table. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to, now that completes our business removed from consent. We would move ahead then to our public hearing section and eight A assessment hearing on delinquent false alarms and mowing charges. And I would, Councilor Lehman, thank you.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? And Nate will present. Welcome.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we have a public hearing on unpaid bills for city services, which for the year includes one, let me fast forward here, which for the year includes one false fire alarm, one false police alarm and two lawn mowing charges. Total amount of these charges are $2,225. I have provided an updated listing, which includes payments received through today. This is a process we go through once a year that allows us to certify these unpaid charges to the property owners, property taxes, as allowed by Minnesota statute for twenty-nine. Following approval of the delinquent assessments, if approved, a $25 administrative service charge will be added to each of these accounts. The admin charge covers costs associated with assessing these delinquent accounts. Property owners will have until November eighteenth to pay the assessment without interest. Following that, the assessments will bear an interest rate of six percent. We will provide a second letter notifying the property owners of their assessment following tonight's meeting. So following tonight's public hearing, staff is recommending certifying the assessments for delinquent bills. So remaining actions tonight, so you have opened the public hearing, is to next to set public input, motion to close the public hearing, and then counsel consideration of Resolution 2022-132, which is a resolution ordering the certification of unpaid false alarms and mowing bills for collection with a payable 2023 property taxes. And staff has not received any written objections.
Thank you very much. Nate, questions of staff? Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, thank you. My question is, how, by what method did we notify the properties on this list?
As the charges occur, whether it's for the mowing charges or the false alarm charges, we will have sent invoices and then we'll send follow-up statements. For a number of these, at least with alarms, we have tried to call the business, tried to contact the business or the operations to see if we can collect payment and we typically are able to do that. With these couple of, the ones on here, we haven't been able to. And then we've sent a notice of the hearing after you approved it to set the public hearing at the last council meeting.
So we sent a separate notification of this hearing besides our invoice and follow-ups?
That is correct, as required.
And what method did we use for that?
Mail. So we will send it to the property address or the owner address.
Certified mail, standard mail?
Regular mail.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I have the same type of questions. How many times were notified? Councilor Whiting?
Thank you. It sounds like staff has done their diligence on this, so I would make a motion to approve Resolution R 2022-132. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's out of order.
Yep, you're right. I'll make a motion. We got to.
Let's see. All right. Further questions of staff? Further questions of staff? If not, thank you, Nate. This is a public hearing. Would any resident like to come forward and make comment on this assessment hearing for fire alarms, police false alarms and mowing services? Seeing none? Councilor Whiting?
I'll close, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. The public hearing is now closed. Councilor Whiting?
All right, I'm in order. Thank you. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution R 2022-132, certifying the assessment for delinquent fire, police, false alarms and mowing bills.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for this and just, I asked a question to staff and we all got copied on it. And you know, one of these businesses or locations, addresses is thirty percent of this bill here. And you know, they have been notified and we get no response from them. Kind of sad that there'd be no movement on that, but so be it. Motion on the table and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Now we would move ahead then to eight B, assessment hearing on delinquent garbage and refuge bills from Dick Sanitation. Councilor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion, public hearing is now open and Nate will present. Welcome back.
Thanks. So tonight, we also have a public hearing on delinquent garbage bills. The city's designated garbage hauler is Dick Sanitation, otherwise known as DSI. This process we go through again once a year that allows us to certify these charges to the property owners, property taxes. Reference to the city ordinances here on the slide, but per city ordinance, the charges are the responsibility of the property owner. Per previous city council actions and our agreement with DSI, the city council has authorized the collection of delinquent garbage accounts in the city's designated organized collection area. As a result, this has eliminated the need due for the service provided to stop services on delinquent accounts. This ensures there's not an interruption in service which could lead to a higher level of the illegal dumping of trash. DSI provided the city with a list of delinquent garbage assessments that covered delinquent accounts that were greater than sixty days past due related to services provided through August thirty-first of this year. We did have one additional certified list earlier this year related to republic services. Those are for services through December thirty-first, 2021. Comparable date at the time the public hearings were set are shown on the slide. We set today's public hearing back on September twentieth, so this table is showing the initial lists from those past hearings or past certification processes. In comparison, the previous year's assessment, both the number of properties and the dollar amounts were higher. There were a hundred and twenty-six more accounts at the start of this process. So tonight is the public hearing for delinquent garbage bills. Our updated list contains 275 properties totaling $39,018.67. That most recent current, or most recent list has been provided to you, which would include payments made through today. Since September twentieth, we've been able to collect 171 payments. This compares to the previous fall hearing last year of 213 customers totaling $30,040. So a little higher in the number and dollar amount than the previous year at the time of the public hearing. Following approval of the delinquent assessments, again, a $25 administrative service charge will be added to these accounts. The admin charge covers costs associated with the assessing these delinquent accounts. Property owners will have until November nineteenth to pay the assessment interest-free. Following that, the assessments will bear an interest rate of six percent. We will provide a second letter notifying the property owners of their assessment following tonight's meeting. And staff is recommending certifying these assessments for delinquent bills. So same process as last time. We've opened the public hearing, set public input, motion to close the public hearing, and then counsel consideration of Resolution 2022-131, which is a resolution ordering certification of unpaid refuse bills for collection with payable 2023 property taxes. And then again, staff has not received any written objections.
Thank you, Nate. Questions of staff? Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nate, you mentioned that after the assessment role is adopted tonight, assuming it's adopted, the property owners have until November, you said nineteenth? The paperwork says November eighteenth to pay the assessment without interest?
Thirty days, so.
Whatever it works.
Yeah, it says it on their letters. I think it's through the eighteenth, so.
So they have an opportunity to take care of this before it gets assessed. Okay, without interest. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. The nineteenth of November is a Saturday, so it would have to be on the eighteenth. City Hall is not open on Saturday. Couple of questions. Can you go back a couple of slides here? The one that shows the, there you go. So if we look at December of twenty-one, two seventy-eight properties, sixteen thousand. Eight of twenty-two less properties, more than twice the dollar amount. This is deceiving. And I think it's proper of us to explain, explain that. Our garbage bills didn't more than double in one year. That's just, that's not true, so. Well, right, but what I'm pointing out is you've got basically the same amount of properties, but you have double the dollar amount than it was last year. And our garbage bills did not more than double in price. So what we have, correct me if I'm wrong, is we have probably different levels of services and higher balances being forward on these properties.
If I could, Councilmember Lehman. So the twelve thirty-one, that would be the final republic assessment. So in that, in 2021, we actually had two assessments. So when we closed out with the previous garbage hauler, we assessed whatever was remaining after that. So probably your most true comparison would be that eight thirty-one, 2021, which would be, you know, nine thousand dollars higher.
Okay.
Sixty-two of Congressmark.
And then Mayor, I have the same questions I had with the tobacco. How did we notify these folks? And this is probably a little bit different because you have, or I meant the mowing, but you have both the contractor notifying them under regular bill that, you know, you're overdue, whatever. And then did we make our own notification of this public hearing?
Correct. So we sent out the notice of the public hearing and then instructed those who had outstanding balances to then pay the city. So that after the public hearing notice went out, it was, we asked them to pay the city in the letter, kind of explain that.
But we did send out a city notification of the hearing, separate from them getting their bill from the contractor saying the bill's overdue.
Cities sent it out directly.
Okay, so they know that they're past due on their bill and then they've got another notice separate from the city that we're taking this action?
That is correct, yes.
All right. And that was by regular mail?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? I think when I look through this, we've been doing this a lot of years. And the number's up a little bit, but the, I think you're correct, Councilwoman, the level of delinquency is up quite a bit and level of service and depending, I mean, I think what a quarterly, quarterly bill, I think you pay a head in garbage. So that's around, I don't know, fifty-four, fifty-five dollars as a quarter without any additional services. So I'm just seeing some of these numbers at two hundred, three hundred, over three hundred dollars have gone. They must have additional services. And then also, this bill list was compiled from the, after the second quarter of billing from Dick's, correct? I just got.
Well, it would cover three quarters, so.
Okay. I just got a bill at the end of August and paid and that was for September, October, November. And, you know, my name, my address is not on that. and November, and, you know, my name, my address is not on this list, so. That's why I said, trying to figure out where that cutoff is. Okay. Further questions of staff? Further questions of staff? If not, thank you, Nate. This is a public hearing. Would any resident like to come forward and make comment on this? Assessment hearing? Seeing none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and Counsel Lehman?
Second.
And I have a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you very much. I think, just in general thinking out loud, we got an email today about trying to be innovative and trying to move ahead and found, find a better way. Let's have those comments, maybe after we address what, what's in front of us right now. Counsel Lehman?
I'll move Resolution R 2022-131, certifying assessments for delinquent refuge bills.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Just to follow up on this a little bit, I know that Mr. Reynolds put out an email today. I've been in discussion with a couple residents in regard to this whole process. I also was in contact with Dick's, as I just mentioned, a couple within the last two weeks, and, Mr. Reynolds, we've got to find a better way, and it sounds like some progress is, is taking steps here to find a better way.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Not ready for prime time yet, because I don't want to put out any information until we can verify that everything can be done, that we think can be done. But we believe that we have a better process outlined, and I look forward to talking with counsel about it in the future.
Yep.
It very much is customer-centered. What, what we do now is very difficult for normal people to understand. I've got to pay Dick's here. There's a date, and now I got to pay the city, but yet I'm contract with Dick's. Why would I pay the city?
Right.
That's what Bill Reynolds would ask, and Bill Reynolds would go ahead and pay Dick's because that's who my bill is. Well, that's human nature, and everything we're doing is fighting that human nature, and so we are changing that process.
And I agree. I, my discussions with a resident, and, you know, I got your city notification, and, and I don't, you know, I don't owe the city. I owe Dick's. They're providing the service. This resident immediately paid Dick's, and.
And then would have to get a refund from Dick's.
And then go around and around.
And, and.
I, I don't believe that resident is on this certified list today. So, but it's on, it sounds like you're going around and around. We've got to find a better process. So, we'll wait for that to get more prime time. Okay? Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to our third public hearing, nine, eight C, a hearing for Merwin Liquors in regard to liquor violations, and Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, I'll move to open a public hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing in regard to eight C. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is open, and Lori will present.
Mayor and counsel, we are here tonight to discuss Merwin Liquor and the liquor violations. As the memo stated, in August of twenty-one, the police department conducted liquor compliance check. They tend to do this approximately twice a year, and Merwins experienced a liquor violation. Our process is to wait until that goes through the courts, and then we send out their notification of the violation. A waiver is sent to them. I attached a copy of that letter and a waiver of admission. However, a second compliance check was conducted in December. At the same time, they also decided to do a tobacco compliance check on that same evening, and so they not only received a second liquor violation, they received a tobacco violation. According to our city code, the first violation, we generally, it's, the first two violations are administered by the city administrator. That's how our city code is set up. And the first violation is a thousand dollars and a one-day suspension. However, we usually suspend five hundred dollars of that fine and the one-day suspension, as long as there is not a second violation within a year of the first one. The second violation is fifteen hundred dollars and a five-day suspension. And provided that there is not a violation occurring within three years of the previous incident. Well, it happened within six months, less than six months of the previous incident. So, in total, at this current moment, Merwin Liquors, if we were going to instate or hold him to the entire fine and suspensions, the fine would be twenty-five hundred dollars and a six-day suspension of his liquor license. Also, according to city code, he had the opportunity to request a hearing before you to discuss these instead of signing those waivers. And so, Mr. Cohen did send me a letter requesting to have this hearing tonight. So, tonight, he is here. He would like to speak to you concerning this. I will just say, personally, this has been an issue with all our liquor and tobacco license holders in the last couple of years. The violations have increased. So, with that being stated, I, I think that we need to take that in consideration in the process here. These, both the tobacco and the liquor license holders are struggling with employees. I know that has been an issue. However, I will let Mr. Cohen share what's been going on, on, from his point, but we've sent everything. The other violators have been signing their waivers and sending them, and he was not the only one. So, I will leave that. So, Mr. Cohen, if you'd like to have a seat and.
Just one minute here.
Yes. Okay, sorry.
So, thank you, Lori, for your update and intro on this. Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Counsel Lehman?
The three-year portion, is that on the second offense or the first offense?
Yeah, the second offense cannot occur within three years of the first one.
Okay.
Yep.
And, just to, that was on the first one, but on the first one, five hundred is suspended
And the day suspension.
With no violation. I got it.
Yep.
Okay. Counsel Whitey?
So, if, if an establishment gets a violation within, you know, one, and in three years, does it go back to, is that wiped out now, and then it's back to, now it's a first violation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. If there had been no violation within three years, we'd start all over again to violation number one.
Really got it? Mr. Reynolds, did you have a comment?
No, not on this particular case. I think we all know that we've got to relook at what we're doing in these cases. We had a compliance check in the last couple of days, and I've emailed all of you the results of those checks, and what we're doing is not working currently.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? Seeing none. This is a public hearing. Mr. Cohen, if you'd like to come forward, you requested this hearing to talk about this issue, and please state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Thomas Cohen. I live at five seven zero four Kemrich Drive. I say quietly in Edina. I'm not, unfortunately, a Shakopee citizen. My name is Tommy Cohen, and I'm one of the owners of Merwin Liquors, Shakopee. I'm joined by my business partners and cousins, Cindy and Stuart Tapper. We are grateful to the Shakopee City Council and staff for affording us this opportunity to discuss how we can collectively advance towards our common goal, that every sale of restricted goods in the city of Shakopee is performed with the highest standards of compliance. Despite my passion for this topic and my ability to be verbose, I have done my best to pare down my statement to make sure that everyone can get home before breakfast. I do not believe that Shakopee's current method of ensuring compliance sales of restricted goods is demonstrating the type of success for which I know we all strive. It is my understanding that last year's compliance check failure rate was one of the highest in Shakopee's history. Unfortunately, this comes as no surprise to me. Every Merwin Liquors employee is required to complete the Minnesota License Beverage Association's off-sale training program before ever stepping onto the sales floor. Every transaction we perform requires our cashiers to scan or enter a customer's birth date. We offer a one-hundred-dollar bonus to any employee who successfully passes a compliance check. Prior to COVID nineteen, we also held mandatory live training events to reinforce compliance sales procedures. Finally, we maintain a zero tolerance policy as it pertains to employees who fail compliance checks, as anyone who does is immediately terminated. And in spite of all of these investments in training, technology, incentives, and retraining, we still failed two compliance checks in two thousand twenty-one. I have given this matter a lot of thought over the last few months, and I believe that last year's compliance check failure rate was the primary result of the most obvious culprit. I asked the city council to fully consider the stress COVID nineteen put on small businesses and our employees. From the ever-changing mandates and policies, as well as one of the most challenging labor markets in our country's history, we were barely able to keep our doors open for our customers. It seemed like we were stuck in an endless cycle of hiring, training, and then losing employees to other opportunities, sometimes within a matter of days. Also, employees who were able to show up for work were often burdened by the extra tasks left over behind by coworkers who couldn't. However, I believe that blaming last year's compliance failure rate solely on COVID nineteen and imposing the penalties set forth over a decade ago and hoping things improve over time is a missed opportunity to do better. Two things can be true. COVID nineteen can be the primary reason that Shakopee had such a compliance, such a high compliance check failure rate last year, and its current policies need to be reexamined. Having discussed the matter directly with the mayor and almost all of the city council members, I know that there is a range of perspectives as it pertains to Shakopee's current compliance statutes. And while I'm not asking the council to stop the practice of compliance checks, it is my request that the city coun, or the city of Shakopee not only takes a pause from imposing these penalties, to consider whether a special exception needs to be made for failed compliance checks made in two thousand twenty-one, but also invest the time to research whether its policies are the most effective approach to improving compliance sales moving forward. If the council were to consider this, I would offer my time and resources as a board member of the MLBA to research what other municipalities are doing to ensure compliance sales. There is no linear correlation between forcing a business to close and improve compliance. Further, it penalizes the employees who are meeting expectations by not allowing them to work during a potential closure. As such, I'm asking the council to work with me to find an alternative solution that will get Shakopee's compliance rate at the top of the state, something other municipalities can learn from, understand, and emulate. Lastly, I have submitted for the public record a letter from Tony Chesick, executive director of the MLBA, that will confirm my level of commitment to this issue. With Tony's help and the cooperation of Sergeant Josh Davis and Kristi Lesko of the Shakopee Police Department, we have already coordinated a compliance training event that will be open to both on- and off-sale license holders and their employees. That event is scheduled to take place at the City of Shakopee Police Community Room on Sunday, December fourth, at nine AM. Again, I thank you for the, your time in considering this issue. I would be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen, for, for that. Questions of the, this isn't an appeal, this is more just a, he requested a hearing. So.
Yes, Mr. That's good, but, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cohen, but I, I understand from the statement that you do admit that these violations did occur on these two days.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Lehman?
Mayor, clarification. So, one transaction with one employee caused both the tobacco and one alcohol violation?
Yes.
So, this, it was one transaction?
We had two separate events on two separate days.
And one event was?
Both tobacco, it was one transaction where the person failed to ID the customer properly, entered the wrong date into our system.
Was that person trained through the process that you described?
One hundred, every single one of our employees goes through the same training. Yes, sir.
Did they, did, did you ask them in the exit interview what happened?
No, we terminated the person immediately.
And I'm assuming the other person that did the transaction for the first alcohol violation, that person wasn't asked why they didn't follow the process?
So, terminating employees, especially when it comes to compliance, there isn't a lot of follow-up with the employee.
Mayor, so.
Yep.
So, it's, it's really an employee that just doesn't want to do the job as they were told and taught to do?
You know, it, I, I have to say this. I really do, because I've worked cashiers. I, I, I know it sounds like, I mean, it's an entry-level position. It is not as easy as you would think. It really isn't. I mean, I, I understand that, you know, again, unless you've worked the job, you don't understand sometimes the pressure that some of these cash, and I'm not making excuses for my cashiers. They're trained to do something, they're required to do something, we demand that they do something, and they fail to do it. But it really isn't an easy job.
The point I'm making is this happens with employees in every industry.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So, I'm not just targeting this specific top, topic. I'm kind of looking at it broad, from all, all industries, where there's just employees that don't do it right sometimes. And I'm not sure how, how government forces an employee to do something right. I mean, yeah, you can terminate them, but that doesn't, you're right, it doesn't fix the problem. So, I, I don't know what the solution is. I, I'm, I kind of, you know, it's almost like in, in this one industry, if they're not doing it right, we penalize other employees, we penalize the business, we penalize the consumer, because now the consumer can't buy the goods and services that they want. But we don't do that to other industries. You know, you go somewhere, you get a set of tires put on, you drive home, you come out the next morning, one tire's flat. You know, does the city jump in and fine the tire business because they didn't do their job correctly? No.
Counsel Whitey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You had mentioned, Mr. Cohen, that your, your cashier's put in the birth date off of, is there, I think I've seen these before where there's a licensed reader, a card reader that could automate, scanner type?
Yeah, we have that.
So, this wasn't being utilized at the time, or was it overridden?
The employee decided to manually enter the birth date, because not every single ID can be scanned. So, you know, depending on the state, depending on, you know, there's just different IDs that cannot be scanned. So, the employee has the opportunity to manually override and put in a birth date.
Okay. I was just trying to see if there was an opportunity for a solution there.
Jim?
Mr. Mayor, just so clear on what's before the council tonight is the violations have now been admitted by your code, and this was discussed very thoroughly when this code was enacted was...
Yes, it was.
Did the council want to leave itself some discretion on these violations? And the council determined it did not.
Right.
It did not want to have to impose a penalty on a case-by-case basis. So, your code mandates the penalty to be imposed in this situation. And if you wanted to change that, you would have to amend your code. But tonight, the code specifies the penalty, and the only question that's now been answered is whether there was a violation.
Right.
So, I understand Mr. Cohen's concerns, but the code says what it says, and it is a mandatory punishment.
Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mayor, my question then for the attorney is, if our code doesn't allow us to deviate from this, and we take this action because it's mandated in our code, that doesn't preclude us from coming back after the fact and taking a look at the code to see if we can find a better way of having more compliance?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Are there any more questions of Mr. Cohen? I guess your business partner would like to speak. You would have to... This is a public hearing. You could come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you.
I hope I addressed you correctly as a business partner.
Well, he wouldn't say so. He would say subordinate, but that's okay. I'll say business partner. My name is Cindy Tapper. My address is 2494 Mayflower Avenue, Minnetonka. I just had a question for the attorney. Does the code stipulate when the suspension must take place? I understand that there's not the potential to necessarily get around it.
The code only specifies that the multiple-day license suspension runs consecutively, beginning at 12:01 a.m. on the first day of the suspension and ending at midnight on the last day. So, the code requires it to be consecutive days.
As I handle human resources, I guess I would ask the city council to give us some time before the suspension comes into place. We have about 12 employees at that store. I would like to make alternative arrangements for them if we cannot work out another solution towards that suspension. I don't want to simply let all 12 of them not work for six days without income. So, I guess I'm asking what the...
City Clerk Lori?
So, if, in the letter that I sent them, because the city administrator is the one who puts the, you know, I've already put a date on that waiver as of November 1st to November 6th. So, that is two weeks from currently. So, if we continued or, as the attorney said, impose what has already been stated on the waiver, those are the dates that were presented to them when I sent out that letter. So, unless you want to extend those dates, we could do that, but choose different dates. But those were the dates that I had put originally on the letter of the waiver. So, that's up to the council.
More? Or questions of from counsel?
I think that was...
You're very kind. Thank... Counselor?
Mayor, I have two questions for him. The first is, does the first to the sixth two weeks buy you enough time? And the second question is, since our code doesn't allow us to deviate from what the policy states, if this is imposed, are you still willing to work with the city to come up with a better solution in our policy?
That's not off the table at all. No, that's regardless of what happens here tonight. We actually are really devastated by the fact that this has happened. We, you know, we purchased this store a year ago, just over a year ago. We inherited a lot of staff. Unfortunately, the two people that violated this was inherited staff. I don't know if that was just a bit of a case of, you know, they were a bit of a dinosaur that they were still used to doing things their own way and didn't quite jump into the way that we do things, which is IDing every transaction, scanning a driver's license, not manually inputting a birth date unless it's unscannable. I find that a lot of employees that sometimes we inherit will just key in their own birth date to bypass the system because they don't feel comfortable following our procedures and methods. The staff that's currently there right now, other than the man who owned the store previous, is all brand-new staff that we have trained, we have hired. As a matter of fact, we just went out for dinner with them on Sunday night here in Shakopee and had a wonderful time, and they're cohesive and they work well together. I don't anticipate that this is going to be a problem in the future. As a matter of fact, I believe we just passed a sting last night.
And Mayor, my last comment is, I think City Clerk nailed it when she says there's so many now at so many different locations that there's something that's not working. That's why I'd really like to take a deeper dive into how to come up with something that's more successful, I guess.
If I may, I do think that Tommy was right, that we always had live server trainings and usually once or twice a year, depending on sort of our calendar. We didn't do those during COVID. They are missed, and they will... They're slowly being reinstated for us. So, it does help a lot, just that in-person reminder. The trainer, by the way, is phenomenal who does that for the MLBA.
Lori?
Mayor and counsel, Tommy and I, when he first applied for the application for this business, we were in conversation about how do we partner together? And he shared his experience in being on this board and wanting to see if there was a way to present training or different ideas. So, he has a lot of ideas that we could definitely tap into, I think, in looking at new ways maybe, or some additional ways, hopefully to change this compliance rate that we're having right now in our community and with these businesses. So, I think this is definitely a great opportunity to have.
If I may, and I know that this is incredibly bold, but I'm just curious if there would be an opportunity to stay the suspension while the city council considers whether or not to make an amendment to the license, to the statutes? It's bold, I know, but I'm sitting here. I'm going to take my best shot.
That's up to the city council.
We'll discuss that once we get a little further along in our process here tonight.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this? Seeing none? Counselor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I have a motion to close the public hearing. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. The public hearing is closed. Counselor Lehman?
You know, for discussion purposes, I think... I understand the labor market has been stressed, especially through COVID-19, and and since it's a retail setting, you know, that had to be really hard and stressful for those types of workers. I'm also concerned with all the violations we've been having, and not just this one, but throughout the city. To me, if there's not an easy technological way to check those IDs, then maybe we need to find a better way, and I'm looking forward to seeing some of those opportunities. But in lieu of that, I think the fines and the suspensions is the best tool we got. Since we can't deviate at this point, I'm not sure that we should.
We're not going to get a motion. Counselor Lehman?
I suppose parliamentally wise, it's probably not proper to just open for discussion without a motion on the table, huh?
Well, I can go back and do it if you'd like.
I'm asking the question.
Yeah, you know, I'm thinking it out. I think what I want to comment on is the specifics of this case. Also, I think I have a couple of council members here that have been on the council a long time and actually can remember why the ordinance was started in the first place. And I'd like to speak to those, but I don't know. I guess I'll start. So, this ordinance is almost 20 years old, I believe, or 18. It was worked in our community many years ago because there were violators of our compliance, and then the local businesses used to come in front of the council, and it got into what appeared to be political, you know, "Oh, I know that business owner." Yeah, no, you fired the employee. And so, I had several discussions with some liquor store owners in town at that time that wanted a policy that was fair and equal and black and white. And when I met with Mr...
And the same for all?
For everybody, to take the little bit of politics out of it. It wasn't... And I shared with Mr. Cohen, actually, the previous business that he bought was that owner came before us when he was at a different location or came and talked to me for hours about our policy. And we did update our policy to make it fair, equal, and very clear, and also to try to prevent those business owners that hold a very valuable license, a liquor license in our community, to try to not have that, "I know you. You're from out of town. You're, I don't know. You're new." You know, the... It took that out of it. It made it very, very simple. And over the last 20 years, how many have come forward to speak on the policy or ask for forgiveness or talk about it? You said, "Oh, maybe..." And I know Mr. Reynolds brought up, "Maybe we need to look at our policy." I actually feel like our policy's working personally because we have had code violations, but it's kept those businesses not from coming to city council. You, they... The owners own a valuable license, and it's to the owner. We talk about entry-level employees, and yes, that's a problem, but it was a problem 10 years ago. If you're at a bank and the teller miscounts money and either gives too much away or puts it in their pocket, or I work for Target Corporation, a teller or a cashier and not ringing up the goods right or wrong, it can happen anywhere. So, but I also feel like a liquor license is... With a liquor license comes major responsibilities, and whether it's you or your employee, it's on your business. And I hold this policy dear to me because I think it has been working. Unfortunately, some of the businesses have failed our community. And I don't, not, you know, personally, but the employee or that's trained and not following it and then puts the owner at risk. But I don't think it's government that's doing that. Every community has some sort of penalty for violations of compliance checks, and I don't think we're any different than other communities. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Mayor, when I said that the policy wasn't working, frankly, this, these fines and suspensions haven't been changed, I believe, in 18 years. These need to be beefed up, and we need to hold establishments accountable for their employees' actions. What we're talking about is selling alcohol and cigarettes to underage children. And it's a license that we have the responsibility to ensure is being accurately and adequately supervised. And, you know, I think from a staff perspective, we'll be bringing something forward in the next several months, looking at these numbers, and probably beefing them up quite substantially.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. The couple of issues. First is, I think this was updated. It wasn't... It's been updated since it was passed 18 years ago. I think I looked up the history. It was updated a couple of years back. It was made stiffer, by the way. Second...
Not in eight years, at least. Mr. Attorney? Our current policy.
Yep.
Can you clarify that, Jim?
I can wait till you're done.
Okay. And then, the other issue is, if you want to waive this until we come up with something changed, the problem with that is any compliant checks that have been done and failed, they all become null and void until a new policy is drafted. We essentially would have no policy at that point for a period of time until we had a new policy. At least, that's my read on it. And I, that's not the right message, I don't think. We don't have the ability to deviate from what's before us, but I don't think what we're doing is working. And I don't think punishing innocent employees is the answer. I don't think shutting down businesses for the actions of one or two is the right answer. There's certain things employees in different industries don't like to do. The one thing I didn't like to do in my industry was fly to Chicago for specialized training. So, we need to find what it is that these employees really don't like, and that's the consequence of not doing it. Nobody likes to sit in a seminar all day because they've done something wrong at a lesser pay. You know, there has to be some kind of incentive in there to get the compliance, because that's really what we're after. I mean, if we're just going to sit back and say, "You know what? If you fail or your employee fails, we don't really care about the rest of your employees. We don't care about your businesses. We just want the money, and that's what's important to us." What really needs to be important is actually getting the compliance from the employees, all of them. You know, you've got a lot that do it right, and then you've got a select few that really wreck it for everybody else. But ultimately, the people that are getting punished here are the consumers, the other employees.
But it's not the... We're kind of, as we were talking earlier about whether we're going to get a motion on the table, but it's not about the... You know, you can say it's about the employee. Every violation that's ever been come before the city council last 18 years is... The first thing they say is, "That employee no longer works in my business." But it's the person that holds the license. So, but we need to move forward on a motion here and then... Counselor, Mr. Reynolds?
Just one point. We have no ability to address anything other than the owner who has the license. And we have to hold the owner that has the license accountable. It's up to them to figure out. The government shouldn't tell them, "You need to do X, Y, and Z to make sure that your employees are following the law." The law is the law. They hold the license, and they are the ones that should be held accountable.
Just to clarify...
Jim?
The last time this code provision was amended was in 2002.
2002?
Yep, that's the one I spoke to. That was the original. When we took the, how I like to refer to it, took the politics out of it, made it fair, made it equal, made it black and white. Counselor Lehman?
I guess this would be a question to our attorney. I don't believe there's anything required here unless we plan on changing policy here at tonight's meeting, right? Since this is just required, we're asking for a hearing?
There is a staff recommendation, which I think would be appropriate, to move to impose the penalties for these violations in accordance with...
We have to act on this and then discuss any possible review of what would come before us in the future. Counselor Whiting.
All right, well, I will make that motion to, recommendation, the recommendation from staff is to be consistent with the city code. Staff recommends enforcement of the one thousand dollar fine and one-day suspension of the license for the first violation, fifteen hundred dollar fine for the five-day, end of five-day license suspension for the second violation. And I'll move its adoption.
Okay. Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the table. And just one minute, Counselor Lehman, Jim.
I, I think you should specify when you want the, that's what I would like.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think the recommendation from staff was November first, was it? I, I think if it goes any later, he's getting into his Thanksgiving market, and I, I would be concerned with that. So I would go with the recommendation from city staff.
So the second?
Yep.
Is that acceptable? Obviously, that clarification you?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So I have a clarified motion and a second upholding the, the city code. Further discussion, Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, I asked the applicant here tonight if that was acceptable to them or if they wanted to move out one more week or not, and I don't recall the answer.
I'm remembering swimming. I'm trying to figure it out myself. Is it possible that I just?
To sixth or eighth to fourteenth?
I'm just trying to decide with the table and everything what's going to be easiest on managers and staff. I hope they also don't have prescriptions on their head.
All right.
Do we have a day to respond?
I'd love to talk to some of my other managers to see if they can absorb some of those employees.
Require it coming back to us.
No.
No, I think the motion stands as made.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Again, I want to clarify that when I met with Mr. Cohen, he fully gets it. He's, he is on board. He wants to be a partner to make this better, more effective. And I appreciate that. I like our ordinance. And to talk about COVID, yes, big pandemic last couple of years. I feel it's over, but I look at our policy over a long term. I'm a long-term person, and I think our policy is, is, has served our community well. Also, I think liquor license hold a, it's a valuable license. There aren't a thousand of them in our community. They're very valuable. And with that comes added responsibility, and whether it's an employee or the owner of the license. We want all our employees to follow the rules. Unfortunately, some don't. But I do think our policy is fair and equal. I look forward to the engagement, Mr. Cohen, that you've offered and stated even to myself and tonight, that to work on better training methods in the future for this, so do appreciate that. Further discussion, motion on the table, motion on the table?
I'm sorry, final clarification. Are we going to be given a day or two to work with city staff to coordinate a date for our closure?
No. No, we would set the dates as stated in the memo. We asked for a clarification and, and it's going to be a lot, some back and forth, it sounds like. So the motion stands. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion passes. Thank you for the discussion. Now, Counselor Brennan?
Do we need to, as a council, do we need to tell staff to move forward with changing this?
Build some consensus that we would direct staff to bring the policy back for review?
Yeah, let's do that.
Do you need it as a motion, or?
Said I was going to do it, so. I mean, you could, you could order me to do what I said I've already done.
Hey, I, can we have a little, for a little discussion?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Whiting.
You know, I, I think in some cases that the suspension of the days of operation, maybe that could be, in a future policy, be able to be paid off, like a thousand dollars a day rather than taking, or whatever the new number is.
This is supposed to be a penalty. It is supposed to be difficult. It's supposed to hurt.
I'm saying that, but it could hurt as a financial thing, and then, and then in lieu of a, of a suspension. That's just a, a discussion.
You know, it, it gets into that trade-off gray area, and that's, that's. I was mayor when we updated this policy back in two thousand and two, and I take a lot of pride in it because it's worked well for our community, yes. We had a lot of violations back then. We certainly have violations now. But we don't have folks coming and appealing. They fire the employees, they get better training, they get better technology. We were discussing those scanners before, and actually, it was talked about. Should we require that those businesses have scanners? And, "Oh, we can't have government telling them to, you can pick and choose, you just need to comply."
That wasn't the issue at the time. The issue was the technology wasn't readily available at the time.
And it was expensive, but.
Well, is it as, as expensive as being closed for six days is the question that, and I think Counselor Whiting is correct.
That's up to the individual business owner.
So the question is, is the technology readily available to make that a requirement and that it's utilized?
Well, the technology was available back then. It was very expensive. In twenty years, maybe the cost has come down on the scanners. There's still the situation where.
The license don't work?
A license won't work.
It's manually entered.
We discussed that it could be a illegal license, and that's kind of on the, on the purchaser.
Well, if, that's, but we already had that discussion in the original because if the license is altered, it's not on the, it's not technically a violation then because they did their job and they entered what was actually on the document. So that wouldn't be considered a violation.
Okay. Counselor Brennan?
I'm just going to suggest that staff come back with a recommendation.
We can do that. We've got enough?
That's fine, yeah.
All right. Thank you all. Let's move ahead then to ninety-one, which is our monthly financial review for September of two thousand twenty-two. Nate, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. In front of you is the monthly financial review through September. Typically, we'd also have the third quarter investment report, however, that wasn't available at the time. So we'll have that with the next monthly, I guess, the next monthly financial review. This slide shows the general fund through September, so it's three-quarters of the way through the year, so we'd expect to be about at seventy-five percent of our budget revenues and expenditures. On the revenue side, the items that were plus or minus ten, ten percent of those budget targets include tax revenue, which will remain relatively flat until we receive our second half tax settlement at the start of December. Special assessments do include the delinquent garbage bills, which were included in tonight's agenda. We show them as negative amounts until they're collected through the assessment process. Licenses and permit revenue have surpassed the full-year budget as a result of the influx of building permit revenues this year. And intergovernmental revenue has also surpassed the full-year budget, primarily a result of municipal state aid maintenance funds, which is our city allocation of the state gas tax. Miscellaneous is currently ahead mainly, mainly as a result of investment earnings, but this does not include a required year-end adjustment for market value, which will be pretty significant as a result of the rapid increase in interest rates over the past year. On the expenditure side, expenditures in total are in line today with a budget target at seventy-four percent. Planning and development is currently exceeding the target percentage. This is a result of the Canterbury Entertainment EAW. However, those expenditures will be reimbursed by the developer, and I think we just recently sent out the bill for that. The building inspection department is also exceeding the target percentage, primarily a result of credit card fees being a little higher than expected because of the building permit revenues and then annual software costs. Engineering is also under budget targets. We had some vacancies, and then we also had staff time being allocated to projects. And then the unallocated is under as a result of the budgeted contingency funds. Then, last slide here is the recreational facility operation budget actual. Just wanted to point out the revenues here. Sand Venture ended up at two hundred and thirty-nine thousand for the year, which is ahead of our budget target. Ice Arena revenues, revenues are similar to last year, currently at about fifty-eight percent of our budgeted annual revenues. And then Community Center, ahead of the previous year, currently at about sixty-six percent of our budgeted annual revenues. So with that, I can stand for any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Nate. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Operating expenses for the Ice Arena up almost a hundred thousand, twenty-six percent. What, and the Community Center is up too for operational. Is that, do we have anything to pin that to?
Well, with, I mean, with the Community Center, you can see that part of it's within the wages and benefits. I think we had converted some of our part-time positions to full-time, you know, additionally this year. I can dig into those amounts and then report back in further detail when we talk about the monthly report next month.
Okay.
Counselor Whiting?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had some discussion about why we continue to look at this one subsection of our, our budgets in one department. And I would suggest, and if I need to make a motion, I can do that, but I would suggest we just let this, the recreational facilities operating budget fall under the normal financial review page. And we don't need to, I don't think we need to look at these in great detail anymore. We're making money over there. There was a concern that the new Community Center, new Ice Arena was going to tank, and I think people wanted to put that out there so people could see it. But it's not, we're, we're, we're working well with that, so I think we should take it off.
This page?
This page.
Counselor Brennan, comment?
Nope. I have no comment.
I like it. I think we had a goal at the beginning that we were going to track these things and try to constantly improve it so it wouldn't be so subsidized, although we don't see the bond payments on this yearly for however long that is.
I think it's politics.
We can't change that, but we can certainly do our best to try to impact these numbers, and, and there's nothing wrong with us trying to do that. It's actually our job to help staff do that.
It's not like we break out other departments, though, but my, my aspect on the whole, but, you know, I'm a money guy. I get this, that we review this, but.
Let's do planning, then. Let's do planning next month.
The planning department?
Hey, I'm just saying, why do we do it?
Counselor Brennan?
Is that, is it a hardship to continue to do it?
It is not. We've got a pretty much program that we could run this part right out of the system. So just a couple of comments on that. So the recre, these, the funds that you're seeing within here are all part of that recreational department that's on this fund, as well as the charges for services, the revenue. So it is, is all included within the general fund already. We're just simply giving a little more detail in here. And I'm, I'm open to presenting it in any shape or form that you want presented. It's not, you know, it's really up to you guys as far as how you want the information presented and, and what shape or manner.
We know you can do it.
Thanks, Nate. Jay?
So leading this staff for the last four years, this communicates to my staff that you don't trust them.
Right.
And they feel that way after every council meeting we have a conversation about it. A little emotional about it because I feel we've demonstrated great stewardship over the last four years. And to continue to do this feels like all the work we've done isn't appreciated.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I mean, we started doing this because of the extremely contentious building of the Community Center and the Ice Arena. I still tell the story of my first meeting after I accepted the job in, in the old city hall where I had two groups of people screaming at them, at, at, at each other. And I was kind of curious as to what I had gotten into. Some of you decided to run for council based upon that particular issue. And, you know, from a staff perspective, I don't think there's anything wrong with doing it for a while. But I have to say, from a fiscal standpoint, I doubt that there is a better-run, fiscally-run facility in the state of Minnesota. Jay's a money guy. He's a budget guy. He's not a recreation guy. That's why he was in the position, because I knew that we had to, we had to make sure that this facility was at least pulling its own weight, if not doing more. But we've been doing this for four, five years now. We don't give the same scrutiny to other pieces of the organization. You know, it's directed specifically at this one, and I think it does have an impact on staff.
Mr. Reynolds can make one more comment. I also extend an invitation that if anyone really has concerns, I'm happy to sit down and walk through the facility and go in detail through how we operate so that you have personal knowledge to communicate your constituency about how we operate.
Okay. Counselor Whiting?
Jay, I just want to make sure you and your staff know that we see it. We've seen it monthly, and it's, it's great. I mean, it's, it's, it's over the top, and I think there's no reason to be scrutinizing it like this, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I came on board here, and I certainly was all about the driving revenue, lowering the expense driving, so we have a successful community center. I think this details that. But actually, hearing about the discussion, I am pretty passionate about it, but I, I, I think we're doing our job and doing it well at the community center. You know, we, we didn't have the situation that this is going to drag our city down. We are doing well, so I would be in favor of dropping this specific page off our monthly financial review.
And if I may, don't forget that we started the financial review. I brought the monthly financial review in because you weren't getting that information before, and I did not like that. I thought that you needed to be getting this information every month.
Right. Well, and I, it started off as a baseline, right? And trying to build and, and pinpoint that, so Counselor Brennan or Counselor Lehman?
I like to see where it's at, if it's not extra work. It's, it's nothing personal at all, so.
I like more detail on everything, so I think that's, that's good. But, you know, I, it's not because it's offensive to offend you. I think it's just important information, either good or bad. So I guess I have always, he would always have the option to ask the questions.
Councilmember Brennan, can I ask a question? You, you don't ask the same level of detail from any other department?
I don't ask any questions about.
But there isn't a slide like this for any other department?
I, I think I would like to see more information on all areas. That's what I was trying to communicate to you. And more, more information on all areas, I think, is really important. But I can understand your point of view and your staff point of view.
Looks like we're.
Last comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor. If we, could you switch back to the last, previous slide? If we see an arrow that's way out of whack, I think that's when we say, "You know, we need to dig into that. Can you bring us back some more detail on, let's say, line item thirty-one, the police department? Why is that way out of whack?" You know, whatever it might be. I think that's when we should ask the question for detail. I don't see it as, I see it more political, and I see it not necessary and offensive.
And actually, if we look at this page, whenever there is a red arrow or a green arrow.
Detailed.
We get the little blurb on that on the front page of this memo every month that details why that is off, and obviously, like, the top-line taxes. That wording is there all the time because of, we only get that twice a year, right? And same with the, the finance department or the special assessments that come in one year. So I, I agree with Counselor Whiting that I think if we had this sheet and we would get some verbiage of why, and if we needed more information, we could get it.
And I'm with Counselor Brennan. I like the more information. We used to actually have a budget process and stuff that was more detailed, each department, and the decision was made to streamline it more. The political question is, when the bond sale compared to referendum on the Community Center building itself was the political question. And that's not a political issue anymore because we're, we're going to pay for. And that's not a political issue anymore because we're, we're gonna pay for it one way or the other because we already built it and the bonds are there. We're gonna make them payments on the building. So this is strictly an operational side. It's got really nothing to do with politics. It's got all to do with trying to be efficient and trying to, uh, find ways of lowering the subsidies on a service that not everybody uses, to be honest with you. And, and it's a, it's a service-to-buy-choice service, if you will. People have to choose to want this service where they don't have the opportunity to choose to have police coverage or choose to have fire coverage or choose to have public works and sewer services. A little bit different, but it's not political in my, in my mind.
Okay. Well, we have not built any consensus on this matter, but I do value the discussion.
I'll bring it up again.
Any other discussion to staff on their financial review for September? Seeing none, thank you, Nate. And thank Jay for your discussion and input. All right, Tenney, city bill list in front of us. Any comment, question for the city bill list? Seeing none, we would move ahead to our liaison report and Counselor Whiting.
Uh, nothing to report this week.
Thank you. Counselor, uh, Lehman?
Mayor, uh, scale me executive. We had a overview of Jordan School, um, overview growth, what the school district's doing. And then Fish had an overview. I can't remember what the acronym, families, something like, I can't...
Families, officials.
I can't remember the acronyms. But anyway, Fish is a, is a nonprofit that helps people in need. It's a great, uh, great program. I have worked with them, uh, over the years. It's good hearing what they're doing. Always looking for partners. The school superintendents had an overview, a discussion at, at the scale meeting. Pretty much over the, overall, uh, issues, teacher shortages, uh... Was it special ed, uh, state mandates and underfunded, these types of things. And then the RTF meeting, we had our first look at the study we've been talking about. It was very first stage of the study. Not a whole lot of information there. I, I do believe staff has a copy of that because I, I got a copy from the consultant. The upstairs rooms that have the cots and stuff are underutilized by the study. It didn't get into detail about what it is they're looking to do through this study. You know, reuse them rooms for a different type of service or what the staffing models for various things might look like and how, uh, services might be delivered in the future. Matter of fact, uh, they're not allowing the service delivery committee to even look at them issues. Maybe it's premature because they haven't decided, uh, what could be utilized in them areas to get more, uh, revenue-based uses. So I'm kinda curious on what the next step is, but they, they had three kinda options. One is just to maintain what they have. Two would be to expand it or modify it in some way, shape, or form. Third option would be like, uh, everybody's pipe dream-type, uh, build-out. Pretty preliminary stuff. I guess I don't have a whole lot of information.
The, did the survey, uh, go out to the active users? The police departments in Scott County, the fire departments, the people that use it?
Well, I know that our police department, our fire department, and our administration are, are actively involved. There was talk at this meeting about, uh, some of these survey input requests going out and going into people's spam folders and stuff like this. They're gonna try to set up one-on-ones to get, uh, feedback from those that they didn't get feedback from. You know, there's, yeah, the one thing that I did put out there is I would like to see the full membership weigh in on if there's, if there's interest in putting a whole lot of money into this facility. And, you know, it's...
That would be good.
I mean, you've got individuals, shock me, uh, that use certain portions of it. But for what, what we're paying per year is more than what, uh, the standalone services that we utilize would cost us potentially at a better facility. So I think I worded that correctly. And, you know, how would you, how would you fund some, some kind of a major improvement? What would be the benefits? I mean, there's some things that maybe are in a major future upgrade that wouldn't benefit us. You know, but yet would we be responsible as the highest population center in Scott County to pay the bulk of that? So there's a lot of unknowns at this point. And, you know, I wish I could give you some better answers, but I, at this point, I really can't.
More to come. Mr. Reynolds, did you wanna weigh in on this?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and, and thank you, Counselor Lehman. The, um, you know, there has been a lot of discussion about this. We're not allowed to say certain things in public, though. I've been banned from talking about it at the service delivery committee, which I find striking for a, a, a governmental, uh, committee that, uh, you know, frankly, I think that we should have the ability to talk about things. But the reality is, is they haven't asked the fundamental question. Do the users want it? And, you know, the reality is, is that police and fire don't. Certainly not our police and fire. But I think it's safe to say that, uh, there was a meeting with the police chiefs, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And it was clear that, as part of those discussions, that the majority of the police chiefs and the sheriff, who was also at the meeting, basically didn't see this facility being of value in the future after, uh, five years or so when our, our bond is paid off. We will pay, uh, for this. You know, if millions of dollars are sunk into the facility, the individuals that are doing the survey are architects. I talked with one today. And I said, doesn't it make you wonder why an architect would be doing a survey? Because frankly, uh, if you don't like this, then you don't get to build the facility. If, if you don't, I go, and I told him, I said, I think that's a conflict of interest, you're, you know... And he kept trying to get me to, um, say what I would need to make it better and then they could build the building. And I said, no, uh, it's not wanted. It's certainly not necessary, at least from Shakopee's standpoint. And the fundamental question needs to be asked, as Counselor Lehman pointed out. Do the users want this facility? And that question has not been answered. I'm not allowed to talk about it at, at service delivery, so...
Been bringing this up for a couple of months. It's going through the process.
It's, it is in the middle of the process. There's, you know, there's not a whole lot of information yet. It is early, so I, I think to really get into where the vision to where it's going is, is premature. But, that being said, you know, I did raise some, some issues that, you know, I, I think both our fire and police, and I would have to assume that other police departments and fire departments have the same... Well, I know they have the same, uh, issues, not necessarily, you know, they, they all have licensing requirements, training requirements, and these types of things that they have to do. And if, if them things aren't available at, at this site, well, they're doing it somewhere else.
Right.
Because it's, it's a requirement.
It's a requirement.
And the other issue that I brought up was, sure, you could update some of these things out there too so that police and fire could get these requirements at this location. However, you're gonna make a big capital investment in, in an area that is really, really and very highly evolving based on technology. So your investment might be a poor investment because two years later, it's, technology has changed so dramatically where you get into artificial intelligence simulations and things like these to where you're now upgrading that recent capital investment again to another investment in, in these equipment needs and technologies, which again changes in two years. So you're almost better off with what some do with leasing. Uh, you know, you, you have companies out there that lease equipment, kinda like we do with some of our equipment in public works. You lease the equipment, the newest and greatest comes on, you flip it over. Your cost is pretty low and you, you know, and in some of these technology areas for police and fire, you have companies that that's what they specialize in. They bring the new technology to these, uh, frontline folks, utilize it, uh, to, a year or two later when they come back to do the next round of, of updated training, they have the newest technology because that's what they specialize in doing.
Right.
And it's really about being efficient with not only the frontline folks' time, but also with the taxpayers' money, so, so more to follow.
All right.
Sorry.
No, thank you, uh, Counselor Lehman. I think it is an important topic and I can't hurry. I, I wanna get more along, but we'll get there. Counselor Brennan?
Uh, thank you. I went to, the spec meeting was last night. Um, the Minnesota Department of Health, um, will be testing water for PFAS contamination on a quarterly basis. This is in response to the ever-changing EPA guidelines. Treating water for PFAS will be a discussion as we move forward on water treatment in Shakopee. Um, at this point, the EPA guidelines are fluid and it's not known, um, what the impact of PFAS is on water treatment.
What is it? P what?
PFAS, polyfluoro...
And percafluor.
PFEs, is that what it?
PFAS.
FAS. Okay.
Um, the commission went, um, into closed section to discuss possible site and negotiation for, uh, water treatment. We completed Gray Drunt's review also. Um, and we noticed, notated that he has a high work ethic and relationship, a positive relationship with the city and, uh, school district. We felt that his major accomplishments this year was completing, uh, the territory swap, the Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op. This morning, I went to the county commission meeting and there was a, um, presentation done by the Child Protection Division. And, um, Jamie Pearson, who's a sergeant from, from our Shakopee Police Department, was there and working with the, she works with the Child Protection Division. Um, and she spoke about, um, our, our connection and our, the work that she does. Um, and she, you know, they, they kept saying, well, she not only, and the officers here in Shakopee not only are solving crimes for child, child protection, but they also provide, um, security and, and safety for those, um, child protection workers that have to go out and into areas. Um, and one of the people at the end of the, at the end of the meeting wanted me to make sure to indicate that she is, she's very, she's a very, um, fine person. Um, and then they said she's just a really fine, fine, fine person. So, um, the work that she does is really appreciated. I think, I think that's all I have to do.
Thank you very much. Uh, for my mayor report, just a couple of items. October tenth, the Shakopee Fire Department, open house and, uh, very well-received, lots of folks. Um, a lot of sense of pride in our fire department. That was great. Yesterday, the groundbreaking for Braviss and Badger Hill in, uh, so, uh, Canterbury Commons. Uh, true partnership with, uh, Greystone Construction. Uh, great opportunity for our, I called it, uh, our, our local day because it really was a celebration of our local businesses. Last night, uh, we had a township meeting with Counselor Lehman, um, to discuss, uh, the issues. And just remind our residents that it's, uh, cleanup day on Saturday. I think that starts at seven-thirty at our public works, get in line, and, uh, uh, it'll be a great day to clean it up. Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, our administration?
It is cleanup day and the weather is going to be fantastic. You know, my staff cringes every time I bring it up because normally it's not. Normally it stinks. But, uh, Saturday's supposed to be fun and good and perfect temperature, so please, bring your stuff to us. Don't throw it in the alleys, don't throw it in the ditches. We will take care of it, starting at seven-thirty. Uh, a couple of things. The alcohol sale on Sunday ordinance, I will have that at the next meeting. And that should be relatively easy to take care of. Mr. Thompson's, uh, firm has been helping, and so we think we've got a solution and we'll get that at the next meeting.
Is that a public hearing thing or is that consent or something?
Nope, we can just, uh, basically make it happen, so. THC update. So I've been doing a lot of coordinating and looking and everything else with THC, um, and our licenses. As you know, the county and, and other organizations are taking a longer time looking at it. Frankly, I've gotta have something here by, uh, middle of next month, uh, a first draft to be sure that we're not missing something. So I will be, uh, bringing something forward. Essentially, this is what I'm looking at. We'll work it as a tobacco last license with the caveat, if in the last five years you have failed a compliance check, you will not be getting a license. And, you know, that's one of the benefits of them giving it to, uh, the city to, to do. And hopefully, that is something else we can say, well, please look at those IDs because if you don't, you not only lose tobacco, but you will lose THC as well, so... Just barely right now, starting to put that together and then I'll send it to Jim's people as well. I'm stealing from others, just to be, just to be absolutely upfront with you. Parklets will be out starting around one November or so. Uh, this will probably be the last weekend, uh, that they'll actually be used, but, uh, expect that downtown. And finally, uh, some really great news. Uh, the Schrader House was one of three, three properties that the Minnesota Department of Administration is recommending be brought into the Natu- National Register of Historic Places. One of three in the state. That's pretty phenomenal. And if properties are listed in the National Register, certain federal and state investment tax rights, credits for rehabilitation and other provisions may apply. So that obviously gives us, I mean, three. And us being one-third or, one-third of the three, uh, had to think about that. That certainly gives us some opportunities then to go to the state and start, uh, asking for funds. Yes, sir.
That puts it on a, uh, a listing throughout the country, does it not?
It does. It is the National Register.
Which gives you some free advertisement.
It also does that as well.
Yeah, advertising and grant, specific grant opportunities. Certainly if the mayor should write the, write a letter to the state there encouraging them to, to push our project through there would be helpful.
Well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be asking everyone as, as normal.
That is good news.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. Item number eleven, any other business before this council? Other business? Other business? Seeing none, we would move on to item number twelve.
I would like to have another, I'm sorry, if I could have another, other business. You know, I'm not, we, we had a, a thing on the consent agenda about naming, um, fields and I don't wanna pigeonhole it to that. But I think in the long run, um, the city would be better off with some sort of policy for naming sites and things. But, uh, I thought we had a policy too, but, uh, I think...
We do have a policy, but it's very minimal.
I, I'd like to see something around that, I think, you know, and I, and I don't wanna pigeonhole it to what we did tonight. In certain situations, there, there's a lot of emotions about, around these, these things. And, um, I'd like to be able to take that out of it and have some sort of criteria. Just to make it, it's, it's hard to say no to something like that when it comes before you with all that emotion around it. So I, I think a policy update would be good.
Well, then, okay, I don't know what's...
Can, can, uh, Mayor, can we, can we have staff just shoot us an email on what the current policy is?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like... Yeah, it's, it's, it's like a paragraph, but yes, definitely.
And then maybe down the line here.
Kind of think about it and dwell on it for a little bit.
Yeah, see what, all right. Good enough on that? Um, fine, moving to item number twelve, Counselor Brennan?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, November first, 2022, at seven PM.
Thank you, Counselor Lehman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn to November first, 2022, at seven PM here at City Hall, like to mind, remind all our residents and kids, please have a safe and enjoyable Halloween, for all in our community, so further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes, we are adjourned at nine oh eight.